Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of May 21st, 2018. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. We'll start first with opening remarks, announcement, agenda review. Are there anything in that category of stuff that we need to mention at this point? I don't think we do. I certainly don't. We're not taking public comment this evening, so we'll get right into our action discussion items. Our first item is a liquor license change in manager for Panda Enterprises doing businesses Panda East at 103 North Pleasant Street. So I presume that's why you all are here.
Yes, yes. Christie voting on the attorney for the applicant. This is Yi Ching Chang. He's the proposed new manager. And really, the reason for this change is kind of a nice one. He has been waiting on American citizenship and he finally got it. So you have to be a citizen to be a liquor license manager in Massachusetts. So that's why we've filed the change in manager application.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions?
So I guess just say my usual thing, but first of all, congratulations too. And you've been the owner for a while, so you're familiar with some of his problems that we had several years ago. And we really appreciate that with your current manager, things have changed. I was curious just to hear a little bit from you about the plans you have for continuing with the management to make sure that all state and local laws and expectations are adhered to and your own training and how you, things that you've observed that you think are working well or whatever you can share.
Language is nervous, Mr. President here. He's, the whole restaurant went through extensive training and as did he in terms of tips and they changed their, you know, their ID processing and so forth with after the incidents and the things.
Yeah, every time we check the ID.
And he's been there for what, 30 years actually? So he's very, been involved with the day-to-day operations all along and will be maintaining, you know, the existing systems and machines will be working pretty well.
You're using electronic checking?
Yeah, they're using the state-of-the-art ID checking software and hardware that scans the IDs and runs a national check and all that, yeah.
And I guess the last question along those lines is if there's anything you can say or any of you can say about staff supervision and training. Not his training, but the training.
Well, I think he's making sure and he made sure because he's really been, he's been really the main owner all along. So it's been his responsibility all along to implement the changes that happened before and make sure that everybody's kept up to speed as always forward.
Okay. That's what we want to hear.
I think I'll pursue that a little bit, having sat through the series of incidents. It seemed that at that time, there was kind of word out on the street with some younger people that that was the place to go and try.
Right.
Your identification. And I'm wondering if there's been a shift that that crowd has maybe gone elsewhere or difference in the clientele or at least an assumption that that word has, that message has been changed?
Well, I think one of the things that they did during the time of the previous suspension was really made sure that they shifted focus more onto the food and less onto the alcohol. They've done a really good job and picked up a really nice margin with their authentic Chinese menu. They have a lot of Asian students and Asian families coming in to eat off of that menu. And they also took some of the more tempting cocktails off the menu. So the drinks that they have now are a little bit more, not quite as interesting to the guests.
So that has shifted the clientele?
Yeah, and they've been much more, you know, much more of an emphasis on, you know, you don't come in here to drink, you come here to eat. This is a restaurant.
So right now, the, if the customer ordered the liquor, it's not, maybe only 5%, 4%, only just for the food right now. We just check, check everything. We order the machine, right? Check every day. Every, every time we just check the customer, the ID.
Just another thought. So with the machine, how much, how many try to, try to, you catch with the machine?
I told everybody, everywhere that I, just customers come in, just take the ID. But the machine, we order about 470. Every year, upgrade about $650.
But how many?
How many IDs, how many fake IDs do you catch?
Oh, right now, I told everybody, no more fake ID right now.
But do they ever go in the machine, does the machine find any?
Yeah, machine just go to the inside, okay, fine, go.
But how many bad ones come?
Do people still try? How many people try?
Right now, but last year, I have a lot of, but this year.
The words, okay.
It's better.
People kept trying.
So people everybody know right now.
So if you'd like to make a motion? Very first one, I think that was the one.
I move to approve the application for a change in manager for liquor license 02866RS0024 Panda Enterprises Incorporated doing businesses Panda East 103 North Pleasant Street, Yi Ching Chang manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there further discussion?
Is there an extra 4A in the motion sheet? I don't think Mr. Steinberg read it, but it says 4 move.
Are you on the revised motion sheet?
Oh.
There's one with yellow line.
Yeah, there was just, it has to be in there or not?
Series 24, 4A noted.
It is in, okay. Sorry, it's just a technicality.
Mr. Steinberg, anyway.
Okay.
You do see it or not?
Do not. Do you have the yellow?
Yeah, yeah. Is it 4A supposed to be in there?
Yes.
Yeah, it's okay.
This goes to comma to there.
There shouldn't be a comma after the number, I don't think. It should be 4A, but maybe Mr. Buckman will work it out for us.
Yeah, all right.
I just wanted to, okay, fine.
I think we've got that sorted out. Anyway.
Not your problem, not your problem. Just a scrivener thing.
So is there further discussion other than the 4A part?
No.
Here, anything else you want to mention, Mr. Steinberg?
No, I was just looking at the application very quickly because.
Just see the number, check the number.
Checking the number, but it's not on the, it's not in the correspondence from.
It's in the top left of the application?
Oh, yep. On the very first page, right here.
Yeah. The question, and we just asked Mr. Buckman in the printed motion sheet on this, where this, the second line.
I think it carried over from our agenda.
The 4A came, is part of, is not part of the motion.
It's not. It came from our agenda sheet.
So that's, I think we read it, I read it correctly.
I think you did, some pressing it out.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Two absent. Thank you very much.
It's all done.
Thanks. Enjoy talking.
All right. Next on our agenda is short-term borrowing authorization of man. I don't think this requires any action other than we need to sign it, but if you want to share with us anything about that real quick.
I'm not sure if you want to sign it now or later, but this is a short-term borrowing bond notification notes for $2,625,000 for Amherstwood Sewer Project, water metering equipment, purchase of the Kiara's property, portion of the Wildwood School boiler, and a portion of the Fort River feasibility study received. Six quotes and the lowest bid, which is what we want, is the Greenfield Cooperative Bank, which was 1.79% interest. It's a one-year bond anticipation note.
Great. Thank you. And so at the end, or at some point.
We'll have other things for you to sign.
You'll sign. So I think, are there any questions for the manager on those, on those borrowings? I think they're fairly straightforward. They're all projects we know about and we've heard about. So let's carry on to our next item. Why don't we skip down? I think would be best to go to the item 4F, which is the authorized regulatory agreement for affordable housing at B.C. North Square at the Mill District. Mr. Malloy is here to share with us some.
Should I move over?
I think so, probably so. Microphone big shot, I think is probably best. So just because Ms. Brewer came in a little bit late. The materials that were right there have yet another version of the, of the document. So I think there are some slight changes if you want to.
Sure.
Take us through this whole thing.
Defense, name Malloy, a planner with the town. You know, just last week we learned that the Department of Housing and Street Development, we're not allowed the town to be part of the regulatory agreement between the state and Beacon. You know, the way this project is being funded is not a local action development, it's a low-income housing tax credit. So they hold that distinction pretty clear. The acceptable alternative is this local regulatory agreement between the town and B.C. North Square and, you know, it'll be approved by the HCD. The version that was sent on Friday, you know, there's one on Saturday, the changes have been really minor. It was clarifying things, you know, for instance, Beacon is not owner property, they're the developer. So typically we say the owner, so that's been clarified. There's, you know, there was something that came around where one of the investors is named in the agreement and they want to be on the notification page so that if they, if something happened, they're the major investor, they would be notified. But in terms of, you know, how this functions, the mechanics, it'll be, you know, recorded first at the registry, so it's, you know, in lead position, so everything's subordinate to it. So that way, if there's a default, this restriction is in place. So it gives the town, you know, the ability to enforce this in perpetuity and that's what we wanted. And it seems like all parties agree to that. So, you know, right now, this is something that, you know, Beacon needs to satisfy the comprehensive permit. So we, I said that this would be a, you know, developed as affordable in perpetuity. The town would be part of the regulatory agreement to enforce that affordability. And with HCD not wanting the town to be part of the low-income housing tax credit paperwork, we have a separate agreement. And so this needs to, you know, this is a requirement that they need to satisfy before they can close on the financing. And although it's the last minute, you know, they're hoping that the town would, the Select Board will, you know, agree to it and then they can hopefully close this week.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
One, just, I think I understand what you're asking us to do, but just my question, the last paragraph of the first, last paragraph of your memo to us, it says, "Yet the town will be in a lead position at the registry so that all financing and other documents are subject to the restriction." And that keeps the affordability in place in perpetuity, provides the town the authority to enforce the affordability provisions at North Square should the low-income housing tax credit regulatory agreement expire or be terminated. But it's not first position in front of the low-income housing tax credit agreement. That's first position in terms of financing? How do we get first position in the whole deal? I don't understand.
I, that's, I'm told it's ahead of the low-income housing tax credit agreement, affordable restriction agreement, so that this is, this will be the primary restriction. Because otherwise, you know, the low-income housing tax credit is for a term, it's only 31 years and then.
So this is in place when that expires?
Yes.
But so it's first position for the regular term agreement, but for financing as well? Because usually there's like who gets the money first, second, third?
Right. I mean, I got asked that twice and they said it would be in first position. I agree. I thought the lending, the financing case would be, you know, the investors would not be subject to it, you know, not want to be, but I've been told that they would be, so.
Okay, that's why, okay, so you had the question, I had the question.
Right. I mean, you know, the idea is that the comprehensive permit, you know, the 40B permit, the underlying zoning, as long as that doesn't allow the developments in place, that would always be in effect, so it would have to be an affordable development. So I don't know if I'd see the zoning changing to allow that development to be something that would be allowed by right. You know, it could happen in the future, but not in the near term. And then this agreement is another layer that gives the town the ability to enforce the provisions. As if the low-income housing tax credit agreement and everything went away, this gives the town the leverage to, you know, to monitor the development and make sure it's affordable.
First position's always better than second position.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, I've been told twice now.
Just a thought, but we don't have money in the deal except for the tax incentive. So even if there were a string of loans for second, third, it really wouldn't affect us anyway because we're not looking to get money back, right?
Right, right. Yeah, we don't, you know, right, so we don't have CPA dollars or any local funds, so we don't need to try to preserve that horribly based on the funding. It's just on the type of project it is.
But it's precisely because of that reason that we don't have an investment per se in that, that we, we need a separate regulatory agreement than, than the original deal, which is to have it concomitant with the DCD.
Right, right. So the HCD said, you know, this is, you're not part of the financing, you're not a subsidizing agency, you can't be a part of the, you know, this is not a regulatory agreement.
Right. Other questions for Mr. Malloy?
I don't know, who's in motion?
So there are three copies, you know, I think last time you should have multiple copies.
Yes, they're over there. Would you like, are you, are we ready for a motion?
I think unless Ms. Brewer and Mr. Steinberg have a question about this, and we're under a certain level of urgency for, for Beacon, correct? What is, what is their deadline, do we know?
I thought it was tomorrow. I'm not sure if it is.
No urgency. Closings are always like that.
Yeah.
Let me read the motion and then if other members have more to say. "I move to accept the affordable housing restriction being granted to the town by B.C. North Square LLC and execute the local," I'm assuming B.C. is Beacon Community.
Yeah, B.C., that's the name of the entity, that's.
This B.C. is how they do it, okay. "Execute the local regulatory and use agreement ensuring the perpetual affordability of 26 residential units to be constructed on property located at 92 and 134 Montague Road, Amherst, per the terms of the comprehensive permit issued by the zoning board of appeals under GL General Law Chapter 44B." Is it 40B? MGL 40B? So may I correct that? And do we have a date of when that permit was issued to reference it in the motion?
I was gonna say, February 21st, 2017, but I have to look at the, they have it in the thing, what'd they say, January 25th, 2018? Oh, well, so February 15th, 2017, and it was amended January 25th, 2018.
How about February 15th, 2017 as amended? Because I'd like to reference back to the actual permit under Mass. General Law 40B. That was a typo in the motion. All right, there's your motion.
So that date goes before the word "under"? The date is after zoning board of appeals, before the word "under," is that correct?
Right, yes, yes. And Mr. Steinberg just seconded your motion.
Yes, thank you. Is there further discussion? Questions concerned? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, so that's unanimous with one absent.
Now you can text whoever.
As please let us know tonight.
I'm sure they'll, no.
And so we have copies to sign.
I want to sleep tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy.
So next we have, I believe, review take positions on April 30th, 2018, in Newtown Media articles. We took a position for free cash, so we're, who did we suggest was going to speak today?
To which one?
Free cash, the first one tonight.
I thought, handy. But I don't, you know, honestly.
I mean, I know that requires an extensive description, so I just couldn't recall. I just don't know. I'd be happy to do it if you, or you can do it, whomever.
Just so we have the vote down correctly from the.
Right, that'll be the key thing. And just to confirm, so immediately following 20, whatever it is, five or six, I can't remember now, it's 34, correct? And so we were going to recommend referral, and then if that fails, we're going to recommend dismissal. Is that, am I recollecting that correctly? Is that for 34?
That's the North Amherst rezoning?
That is the, yes. Mr. Kainer's hard.
I don't know.
I think that that's what.
You really want a referral? I thought we didn't want it at all. You maybe didn't do that.
I think we did referral, probably because the planning board recommended referral.
I have my sheet, so.
Logistics in order here. My sheet cannot be as up to date as it should.
Refer planning board for 01.
Right.
Like the sheet says.
Okay. And I think that's the motion, the.
There is an issue before 01, that's not accurate. It could be one absent, but it can't, it's not an exception. Oh, right.
Right, I have it as an absent.
Before, yes, 0, no, one, absent. Yeah.
Okay.
I just.
And if that failed, we were.
Recommend dismissal.
We're recommending dismissal. And do we have a third position if it's not dismissed that we recommend against?
I think we implied that with dismissal. I don't know if we need to take, yes, Ms. Brewer?
I'm sorry, I lost track of which article we're on now.
Still on the same one.
34.
It's all 34.
There's a series of questions.
Exactly. Many, many alternatives, yes. Because originally we said it was not consistent, therefore we recommended referral to the planning board. And then what was our second choice?
Dismissal, I believe.
I don't have that in my notes from the 23rd, but I think that we may talk about that again later.
I think it was later that we went to that second. Moderator suggested that it might not be effective. If referral doesn't pass, then dismissal might not also pass, but.
So can we, if dismissal doesn't pass, could we not recommend the article? If that motion that should referral and dismissal not pass, I move that we not recommend the article.
Second. Is there further discussion? Yes?
So just to be clear, referring to the planning board, then dismissal, then not recommend. Okay. If there even is a motion to dismiss. Right. But we are not making. No, we're not. The motion to refer. We are not making the motion to dismiss. That's where it also gets complicated. We're not making any of those motions. We're taking a position on each of those three options as they come up.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
We just, as we've talked about before, I would encourage the presenter to be quite emphatic about our position on this from our prior discussions.
Absolutely.
Strong stance. Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Any other things? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's unanimous with one absent. So 40. One absent. Any other logistical related things in town meeting? Yes?
So I had texted Mr. Weiss this afternoon, after I texted you to tell you I wasn't feeling well. I texted him to find out if he was still planning to do dismissal for the other article that we, 37, that for the other article that we had said was not consistent with the provisions of the charter, but then of course, you know, we had to do other things after that happened. So we had recommended dismissal. We were not moving to dismiss. Our script says that Mr. Weiss on petitioner's behalf was going to ask that it be dismissed. I asked if that was still true and as luck would have it, no, it's not. And so quoting, "After consultation," sorry, "somehow, he was wanting to sign me to the midword, yes. After consultation with Jim Pistrang, we decided to make it a non-binding resolution. I said Select Board didn't know that and therefore hasn't discussed that. Thanks for the update. That makes more sense than referral." And he said, "Just decided today." So I'm not sure how, since we don't in fact know for certain what the motion was going to be because it has gone through several different iterations, possibly subsequent to the printing of our script or the motion sheet that everyone got. I don't know what the exact wording is of this non-binding resolution, but it's a non-binding resolution, which in fact in some ways circles back to the original issue because originally in town council looked at this, KP Law looked at this back in the early days when it was first submitted, they said it looked like a resolution. It didn't look like a change to a bylaw. So I don't know what words he's going to actually move as a non-binding resolution, but apparently that is going to happen. So I wanted to bring it up as a, do we have a position on that? Ms. Brewer, you're more up on this than I am. You know about it, a few minutes before. For a minute? No, not a lot. We want to offer a motion to dismiss. Because I, there's an inclination to do that, given that there's many things we don't know. And we were under the assumption that a motion to dismiss would be offered and since it would not be, I would entertain us doing that if other people wanted to do that.
The other thing, just that I'll mention, I was rereading the memo from KP Law relative to the warrant and one of the interesting points they made particularly about this is that even if it were a bylaw change, it might not apply because essentially they're grandfathered in by virtue of the way state law's written around that. So. Not sure it changes anyone's opinion, I'm just reminding someone.
Yes, no, that was actually very much on my mind and that was what I was going to say too, because I think for me, that's a reason for dismissal because we don't know what the, would impact the ability of the town to do anything that is going to achieve the results that is wanted regarding this one particular range. And with the lack of development, it would seem that this is one that would be ripe for referral if it was a circumstance where we didn't have the change in government coming. Under the terms of the change in government, it seems that it'd be best to just let it be dismissed and come up before the council in its normal course of business.
Would you be willing to have that be a motion?
Ms. Brewer?
So it looks, some of this is what we were trying to establish from the time we signed the warrant, when we did not yet have any benefit of council recommendations as to what we were putting on the warrant. As opposed to something somebody sent an email today, said Select Board should have just kept things off the warrant if they didn't want them on there. Well, that wasn't really a legal thing we could do, so therefore we didn't do it. Given where we are now, given that we're trying to get finished tonight, and given that it doesn't matter, it truly doesn't matter what happens with this. If it passes and people think they're going to somehow do something with it as a bylaw, it's not going to go anywhere because it does in fact conflict with state law. It would apply to new gun ranges, but it won't apply to the current one and seems unlikely that we have any in the office. So I am more than happy to stay perhaps with a little less tension in my voice on the floor of town meeting that if it was referred to the Select Board, we wouldn't act on it. So I, before the new council's placed, so I'm just not really sure we need to tie ourselves up in too many knots about this. I think we could just say we vote no on the non-binding resolution, in fact, if dismissal isn't offered by someone else, which it appears is not being, or it could be offered from the floor, that's entirely possible, or we could offer it. But I'm saying rather than what to me feels like we no longer have this nice clear guideline of we're going to do this, but not this, and this, but not that, that's gotten much muddier as time has gone on, as we saw with supplemental dwellings, for example. So I feel less concerned about somehow, we don't like it when people send a message. And so I'm not sure we're sending much of a message by insisting on dismissing it ourselves if the petitioner's not interested in dismissing it. It feels like, why fight about it? It's not something, that to me would be more serious if it was something that was actually going to then negatively impact the town if it. It's not something, that, to me, would be more serious if it was something that was actually going to then negatively impact the town if it passed. And it's not going to, because it isn't actually a thing. We would be feeling the need to protect the town's interests by insisting on dismissal, and I think we'll just be seen as fighting for the sake of fighting, as opposed to, but I certainly understand the thought behind it, given all we've talked about over the past month, as to how these things should work. But I guess I'm uncomfortable, I mean, I will say whatever you guys want me to say, but I'm uncomfortable with saying that we should make the motion to dismiss the petitioner warrant.
What's so difficult about this is that we're being asked to react to something we haven't seen.
Right, exactly.
And therefore, it catches us unable to come to an obvious conclusion that this is a motion that, for a resolution, that would have no binding effect on the town or anybody, or including the council to be elected, but we don't know that, because we haven't seen it.
Yes.
And that's why we're kind of in this weird position.
Maybe, and I hear, and I think I agree about not fighting for the sake of fighting, even though it is tempting sometimes. If we were to take no position on a non-binding resolution, as we have done on many, and explain in our, your presentation, just what you had said, that we didn't know, we don't know what's in the resolution, so we can't really support it or not support it. Our inclination, we had been informed up until today that there would be a motion to dismiss. We had supported the motion to dismiss. Absent that, we're not prepared to take a position and let other people fight it out, should they want to. If there is a motion to dismiss from the petitioner or from the floor, then we could say our position was to support dismissal. And if not, not to take a position on the not ever seen resolution. I mean, I'm just thinking off the top of my head. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, because I don't, we didn't get the text. I mean, I got a text, but we didn't put the text to the resolution that says this. We still don't know what happened two hours ago.
So I think it's all about the statement, rather than trying to get it to be this outcome or that outcome.
Are we, the other thing I wanted to ask you about, associated with this before I knew that, is if someone decides they would like to refer it to the Select Board, as came up with an article last time over at Town Meeting, I would like to know if I am authorized to say that if it were referred to the Select Board, that we have neither bandwidth nor the time to work on this prior to the seating of the Town Council. And the Town Moderator will probably say something along the lines of, you know, just referring it to them doesn't mean they have to act on it. But I want to make it clear to people that we, I would like the authorization to make it clear to people that we are not going to call a special fault Town Meeting to deal with this issue.
We can't, if Town Meeting votes to refer something to us, whether we like it or not, it's referred to us, but I think to be clear that if it's referred, it goes there to die.
Mm-hmm.
Someone will make a motion about no position and position on referral?
Because sometimes we do ask for things to be referred to us, so that we could work on it a little more.
And other than bothering to ask that it not be, just say, if you do that, because we think it's outside of the scope of the transition. We need to vote that position?
Our previous position was taken not on May 7th, as it says on our chart, but actually on May 2nd, which was, we actually heard from the petitioner way back on April 2nd, before we really knew what we were going to do with any of these things. But our chart says 5/7, it was actually 5/2, we voted to recommend dismissal. Not that we ourselves would necessarily have to be the ones to dismiss it.
Do we need to vote a position about referral, or you can just say it? We just, we have consensus, I think, among us.
We knew this already, so we don't really have any information from us.
But I want to make sure you...
I think that's, I think the, you know, by not taking a position, it's an opposition, right? So, I don't know that we need formally vote on that.
We trust our presenter to present this.
So, so the motion would be that to affirm that we still, as in our May 2nd vote, support...
Any motion from anyone on dismissal.
Yes, not that we're making it, but we support dismissal, and we continue to do so in the absence of additional information. And that if it's not dismissed, if it comes to an actual vote on some content of some motion, that we have no position.
I guess the only thing is that, that's not a thing, that's not something I'm comfortable with until I read it, and we are not adjourning this hour meeting until the end of Town Meeting. And I think we do have an opportunity, if it looks like it is a substantive thing, that we may need to ask the moderator for a few minutes.
Yes, we can do that.
So I'm not, while I understand process wise what you're talking about, I don't understand what they could possibly put in the motion, that we would possibly need to say, we recommend you defeat this, which is why, or we enthusiastically support this, which would be the alternates to, we don't take a position.
But if we look at the motion, is, is to be stated, and we'll try and get it from Mr. Weiss before, if we see something which we think is unlikely, then any of us can ask. Otherwise, we're in a position of just, we know what we're doing.
If a red flag goes up in the language that we see, we have the opportunity to ask for a pause, so we can talk.
Okay, so I think that, I think that's what we're saying.
That's it. That's all we're saying.
There may not be a red flag.
Because, again, we don't know if they're going to change it until two minutes to nine, when they walk up there.
No, we don't know.
Unless he says something to us now.
Right.
Okay, we have a plan? Do we need any motion, or are we good?
I think, I think, I'm happy that we do, unless we feel we do later.
Right, right, okay, we're good. We have an understanding, we have a course of action.
So, did we just agree that sort of motion by consensus?
Yes.
Okay, and I just want to clarify then...
We agree by consensus, not a motion.
Well, it was...
Do we know, do we know who speakers are? It sounds like Ms. Brewer is, I don't find...
Yep, she does that one.
On that one, and...
I have 34, which will come up after the free cash. And then, Ms. Brewer has 35 slash 36.
I have the twins.
And then I can state the no position on 38. We do have a consent calendar item, so if we want to take care of that.
May I add one more question about Town who steps? So we didn't take a new vote on 37, and on 34, did we take a new vote, that we were referring Planning Board, or recommend, yeah? Recommending referral Planning Board, recommending dismissal and not recommending...
We voted tonight.
We voted again tonight, for that three part, actually. I just want to be clear with that.
Recommend Planning Board, then dismissal, then not recommend.
Yes.
Covering the waters.
Yes, but we have to keep doing different things over and over again, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I move to approve the items listed on the consent calendar for the May 21, 2018 agenda as presented.
Second.
So motion is second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous with one absent. And, do we have any items under Charter Transition that we wanted to discuss this evening?
Yes.
Yes, the hearing on the Charter and the Joint Committee on Ballot Laws will be on Wednesday, May 30th at 1:00 p.m.
And I guess that the question that needs to be determined, but I don't know that we need to do that in this session, Mr. Slaughter is the one who is the key decider on this, is who is going and who is speaking on behalf of Select Board and the town, and I think we need to let that play out in that fashion, rather than have it decided now.
Ms. Brewer?
Well, I think it's something we can all talk about, and since we can't do that unless we're in public session, I have thought about how we might want to represent the town, and I think certainly Mr. Bachmann, and I think you would say you were available. I was thinking of Mr. Steinberg for a number of reasons, and then I was also thinking about our council, Lauren Boebert, because of a familiarity. And I know there's been discussion with other people who are interested, who aren't directly representing the town. I think a small focused group for the town of three, I named, is something I'm comfortable with, although I understand it's the chair's decision ultimately, who represents this board. And perhaps if other people, I mean, it's a known date, and if other people who were interested in this wanted to go, they could certainly organize themselves to do so, and, but I don't think, I think we have to be really clear that who's going representing the town, and I think a small focused group is the best strategy, but just my opinion. I talked to the chair a little bit earlier, so I'm comfortable saying my opinion.
Ms. Brewer?
So, along those same lines, yeah, I was thinking also about, I'm not sure if Mr. Bachmann would need to necessarily speak. You know, I think it's one of those things where you sign up and then decide how much you want to do, or if you want to divide it up, kind of depending on how it all plays out. Since you sign up when you get there, you won't have to sign up ahead of time, apparently. And that, and if Mr. Steinberg would speak on our behalf, just based on his experiences thus far, and then if, do we think we could get KP Law there?
I have not asked, I can, yeah.
Does it make sense to you?
Yes, I think it makes sense.
I like that idea a lot. And then Mr. Bachmann asks also, has reference there, if, if a question, but I would, I would recommend, that's the group people I would recommend, and then it's also my understanding that the former chair of the Charter Commission intends to sign up and speak, and so although I would hope that person would not go first, I would hope that the current elected official would do that, rather than the very recent elected official. But would also be there to answer questions associated with it.
That would be their choice, but that's not necessarily our team as such.
Right. But it is perhaps a little different than just an interested party from the town of Amherst. It's kind of an in-between sort of...
Well, they can claim that, but it's still not representing the town. I don't think...
Not in a formal way. Mr. Steinberg, are you available on the...
I am. I have held the date open.
Okay, good, true. I'm actually, so I think that, I'm pleased, if you would, represent this. That'll be easiest from... That'll make that part easier.
Two other things. One is, got a note from Ms. Kay Moran, who is serving on the Charter Bylaw Review Committee. She has been accepted to a housing list that she has been on, and will be available in town until August, but wondered if the Select Board wanted to consider replacing her earlier than later, since she won't be here during the key months of September and October. She's willing to serve on until then, but that's something for you to think about. The second meeting of that group is tomorrow. They're still sort of just playing with sort of formats on how they want to do their work. They're not actually doing any work at this point, but, and they've elected Mr. Bob Ritchie to be, to chair the committee.
Ms. Brewer?
Associated with, I mean, obviously, we're hearing this for the first time, but my initial reaction is, thank goodness she's willing to stay on through the initial stages of it, that's terrific. I really appreciate that, rather than saying, nope, got to pack right now, bye-bye. Because we're, we're actually in some ways hoping against her wishes that she wouldn't get in her house.
We always want for her best, for her best well-being.
Place that she was going. But I think one of the things that may arise out of these meetings is that we may see interested parties show up at the meetings who might make a good member, and so I think that we want to make sure we don't lose track of it, because we don't want to say, oh, oops, Kay's gone tomorrow, and now we only have two members. But I think it would be better to wait a little bit, but maybe did we want to put something out that asks for another person? It might be nice to have an overlay, you know, overlap.
Along with, I was wondering if we wanted to recruit a person, sort of who might be interested in attending some of the meetings, maybe they have summer conflicts, who could sit in and then be familiar and be ready to step in to the, because I think we, the charge is three people, so there could be somebody who attended, or started to attend when they, and then would be, they would potentially be the next member when she left. So it gives us time to plan for that, that overlap.
So just wondering how we might appropriately, effectively recruit.
I think we need to do some brainstorming.
Okay.
And did you have something else?
The only thing, other thing I'd say, now that we know that the chair, who's been selected, might want to consult Mr. Ritchie about this too.
A different topic, just sad news to report that you've already alerted to, that Mr. Ron Bahanowicz passed away last week. He was the facilities manager for the town for many years, and had a brain tumor and passed away from that. And his wake is tomorrow, and his funeral service is actually, although he lived in Deerfield, he had a close connection to St. Bridges, so his funeral mass is tomorrow, Wednesday, St. Bridges.
I think you sent it to us, but I forget the times for the wake.
Four to seven for the wake tomorrow in Deerfield, and then the mass is at 10:00 on Wednesday.
Drew Sadles?
Yeah.
Any other things at that point? All right. So I think we'll go into recess the evening, unless there's something else.
We can make a couple of quick announcements.
Sure.
So, on May 29th, the Governor's Commission on the Future of Transportation is conducting a listening session about autonomous connected vehicles, connected vehicles. On Tuesday, May 29th, from 1:00 to 3:00, in the Cape Cod Lounge of the Student Union at EMS Amherst. And so people are very excited that faculty are going to be speaking there as part of this, as part of the Governor's Commission. So for all the people who are interested in transportation, which we know is a lot of people in our community, that's a week from tomorrow, from 1:00 to 3:00, in the Cape Cod Lounge, and at EMS. And the other is that we know that Town Meeting since 2015 has been declaring Race Amity Day the second Sunday in June. We wondered the other night if we'd already done this early, and we had, so that was great. And I wanted to let people know, again, that the actual celebration will be on Sunday, June 10th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Unitarian Church Hall, and that it's usually that time. And I believe Mr. Slaughter's going to read the resolution there, so that'll be great.
Can you help her to do that?
And it looks like Mr. Slaughter's also speaking for, on our behalf, at the Memorial Day Ceremony. So that will be super for those of you watching at home. We assemble at 9:00 on Common, and then go over to War Memorial Pool. So ceremonies will be at about 10:00, and certainly, we wrap by 11:00.
Thank you for that. Any other?
And will we adjourn?
No.
No, no, we continue, we go into recess, sorry.
We'll go to recess for now.
We'll see how you heard.
But thank you all.
Yep.